Seeing as we have a quorum and at 6:30, I'd like to go ahead and call this special session of the Bloomington Common Council to order. Maybe the clerk is ready. Will the clerk please call the roll?
One more time with fun. Councilmember Flaherty, you're here. Ruff?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Stasberg?
Here.
Daley?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Sorry.
Here.
Thank you. Can I go ahead and launch into our agenda summation for this evening? We're going to start with a couple of reports. There is a session for reports from council members. Because this is a special session, our agenda doesn't have to follow kind of the like normal course of how it usually follows. But we are going to start with reports from council members, and then we'll have a report from the mayor and city offices greenhouse gas report, which is always interesting. And then we have two resolutions for this evening up for discussion. Resolution 202505, initiating proposals to amend the UDO regarding various sustainability efforts. And then resolution 202506, also a proposal to amend Title 20, the UDO with regard to zoning districts and development standards, et cetera. So then we'll have, actually, I just realized that there was a general period of public comment at the end. I'm not sure that that was supposed to be there, but that public comment period will be on items not on the agenda because as part of each of those resolutions, there will be a public comment period within those resolutions to discuss those specific items of legislation. And then a note on council's schedule, and then we will adjourn. So we're going to go ahead and start with council member reports, and I will start tonight on my right with councilmember Flaherty.
Your report, thank you.
Councilmember Ruff?
Your report tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Rallo?
I'll just announce that councilmember Ruff and I have our monthly constituent meeting on the third Saturday of the month, and the 15th will be the third on March 15th at 10 a.m. And you're, of course, welcome to come, zoom in, and you can find the link at bloomington.in.gov/council. And just follow the link at the calendar, and love to have you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, just briefly, I had my constituent meeting on Saturday, and just some of the things we talked about, we looked at the convention center plans, there was a question about what the plan is for the land that won't be used for the convention center expansion, and what development might happen there to make it a lively area. Then, of course, we talked about the two UDO resolutions that are coming forward today, and there were, you know, thoughts for and against those. There were also concerns that tariffs will increase construction costs, and that will be detrimental to our efforts to expand affordable housing. And that's about it. So just wanted to report out from that meeting, and it's always the, it's generally the second Saturday of the month at 11 a.m.
Great, thank you. Going down to the other end, councilmember, sorry.
No report, yes.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
No report, thanks.
Okay, councilmember Daley?
No report.
Okay, thanks. I do have a short report. I just want to report on Plan Commission, which was on Monday. So our, we had a few different petitions, but they were all essentially the same thing, which was changes to the UDO, which is interesting. There were 86 changes to the UDO done at the Plan Commission meeting that were all staff-initiated, and they were mostly small adjustments led by staff based on their experiences dealing with the document and developers. They included aligning sections with each other, grammatical and spelling errors, filling in missing information, increasing clarity. And then there were a couple things that were more substantive. One of them was a change to remove the requirement on plexes to have separate utility meters. So those have been approved by Plan Commission and sent forward to the council with positive recommendation, so we should be seeing those sometime in the next few weeks as an ordinance. So that is my report for this evening, which brings us to the greenhouse gas report. So if you want to come on up and, like in usual meetings, if we can try to have the section be roughly 20 minutes or so, including the presentation and councilmember comments, that would be great.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure that Wes DiSilvestro is on the call. Wes?
Okay, great. Okay, good evening. My name is Sean Mia. I am the Assistant Director of Sustainability for the city's Economic and Sustainable Development Department. I am here tonight to present the city's 2023 greenhouse gas inventory report. The inventory was completed by our vendor ClimateNav, who has also created our comprehensive climate action dashboard. Data collection for our 2023 inventory began in the spring of 2024 with the help of our former Sustainability Program Coordinator, Michaelan Lynch. The main reason we are publishing this report in early 2025 is because receiving data from CenterPoint Energy was delayed. We anticipate annual greenhouse gas inventories to be published in a timely manner moving forward. Now I'd like to turn the presentation over to Wes DiSilvestro, who is the President and CEO of ClimateNav. Thank you for being here, Wes.
Thank you so much, Sean, and it's an honor to be here tonight. I've spoken before council prior to present the climate action dashboard that Sean alluded to, and it's wonderful to be back tonight to present the 2023 community-wide and municipal operations greenhouse gas inventory. So I've got about a 10-minute presentation prepared, and then we should have around five minutes for questions and answers at the end, and really looking forward to the discussion. So I'll dive right into things. Next slide, please. All right, so to frame the discussion, one thing I wanted to start with is to just highlight all of the incredible work that Sean has been doing in the Economic and Sustainable Development Department to make the city's sustainability work really data-driven. So three things I wanted to flag here. First, we've worked together with Sean to create a standardized reporting process for this greenhouse gas inventory. So not only will we be updating the inventory every year, but unlike the, you know, majority of approaches that municipalities use where they have different consultants that update the inventory and the numbers are not quite commensurate, we're going to be using a standardized methodology to make sure that we have really consistent and accurate reports to provide to council and the public. Secondly, for the first time ever, we've conducted a municipal operations inventory. So what that means is instead of just looking at, you know, emissions across the entire city, we also looked at which percentage of those emissions were due to government activities from the city itself, and I'll be sharing some of those results today. And then finally, Sean mentioned the city's climate action dashboard, which is an awesome resource for constituents and anyone interested in the city's sustainability work to check out. We've updated that with all the data you'll see today with some really accessible graphs and explanations, so definitely encourage everyone to check that out. All right, next slide. Okay, so to start, we're going to jump into the community-wide inventory, and then I'll discuss the municipal operations inventory later. So reminder, community-wide, this is just a measure of emissions that using a variety of data proxies for what we think, you know, the global emissions that Bloomington is contributing to the world each year. And this graph shows a breakdown of those emissions by sector. So the largest slice there is the stationary energy sector. Stationary energy you can think of as the grid-supplied electricity that powers our buildings, or also, you know, natural gas that's being combusted to heat buildings, used as cooking fuel, et cetera. And then the second-largest source of emissions for the city of Bloomington, which makes up just under 15%, is transportation. And that's specifically composing, composed of aviation, so the Monroe County Regional Airport, as well as looking at, you know, on-road transportation, so people taking their daily commute, freight being transported over the roads, things like that. And then just under 8%, at 7.7%, emissions are coming from solid waste and wastewater. So that's not energy usage for solid waste and wastewater, that's specifically the kind of biological and chemical emissions that's coming from either the landfill, or also chemical emissions that's coming off of the wastewater treatment process in the city. All right, next slide. Thank you. So this graph's really interesting. This gives us a look at emissions on a community-wide basis over the last 20 years, and one thing you'll notice right off the bat here is that the graph is actually decreasing. So each year, those bars are getting smaller, which is a really great sign. That means that the city's emissions are actually reducing in amount. And the primary driver of the city's emissions going down since 2008 has actually been improvements in decarbonizing grids by electricity. So the city's utility provider is Duke Energy, and Duke has done a lot of work to, you know, decommission coal plants, transition to solar and wind and other sources of energy that are sustainable, and all of that is showing up on this graph here with kind of providing tailwind to reduce emissions. Now, there are a number of other sectors and subsectors that the city will still have to kind of pay attention to, which we'll talk about today, that are either, you know, increasing or staying flat and are, you know, so to speak, not the low-hanging fruit that have to be decarbonized for the city to reach its climate action goals. Next slide. All right, so this is specifically drilling down into transportation, and what you'll see here is a breakdown of transportation emissions each year by type of vehicle. So we're looking at light-duty, medium-duty, and heavy-duty vehicles using Department of Transportation data from the state. And one thing you'll notice is that it's stayed relatively consistent over, you know, this five-year period. So for the most part, transportation emissions, you know, the main way to reduce them is to electrify vehicles, and the city is still pretty early in the electrification of its vehicle stock, both for municipal, kind of the municipal fleet, the Bloomington Transit fleet, which we'll talk about a bit later, as well as just resident-owned vehicles. Next slide. This is a graph that is now talking about the solid waste sector. So this is looking at emissions that are coming from landfills, and you'll see the dark line is measuring the actual emissions, and that's directly related to the amount of waste people are putting in the landfill each year. You'll notice it's actually gone up over the last few years, and so we're actually seeing a slight increase in solid waste emissions. This is something that I've seen in a lot of other municipalities across the country. Bloomington's not alone in this, but it does point to, you know, the importance of things like composting, recycling, diverting waste, and preventing waste in the first place as a way to reduce solid waste-related emissions. Next slide. And this graph kind of, you know, brings everything together. We don't have enough time today to go into every single, you know, chart and everything else. I recommend everyone read the official report because there's quite a bit of detail in there, as well as check out the dashboard. But this graph compares the forecast, basically, of the city's emissions against the climate action plan and its reduction targets. So the black line and the solid black line, the dotted line, are looking at the actual historical emissions, as well as a projection of where we think those emissions will go up through 2050. And then the orange line is measuring the actual rate of, you know, where those emissions would need to be for the city to hit its reduction targets. So the first reduction target is in 2030. You'll notice that the black line is beneath the orange line, which is amazing. That means the city's actually on track to meet its 2030 target, which, you know, a lot of communities that I work with are not, so very impressive, and I think just a testament to the amount of work the staff is doing here really to try to drive community action related to climate. And then in 2050, you'll notice those two flip. The black line's actually above the orange. And so what that says is that for the 2050 goal to be hit, the city's actually going to have to increase how much it's decarbonizing its community-wide emissions if it wants to reach that 2050 net neutrality goal. And what you'll notice here in the description at the top is that the amount that the rate of decarbonization is going to have to increase is about 30%. So the amount of emissions that you're preventing putting in the sky will have to go up about 30% if you want to hit the target by 2050. All right, next slide, please. All right, so now we're going to jump into municipal emissions. I think this, yeah, perfect, this is the perfect slide. So this is a reminder, just looking at government activities. So we're not looking at state government, we're not looking at federal government, we're just looking at activities that the city of Bloomington itself is doing that are contributing to emissions. There's three sources here, again, three sectors we're looking at, and you'll notice it's a little bit more distributed. Stationary energy only makes up 34.3% of municipal emissions, whereas before, you know, it was making up over 3/4. And actually, the largest source is solid waste and wastewater, which we'll get into. And then under 1/4, 23.3%, is attributable to transportation, which is both the city's municipal fleet, as well as Bloomington Transit, which powers public transportation for the community. Next slide. All right, so that same graph we saw before, which is looking at emissions over time, except now we're just looking at it for the municipal level, and you'll notice that it has decreased as well, which is a great sign. It shows the municipal emissions are going down, so the city has been, you know, more resource-conscious, it's producing less emissions each year, but the rate at which it's going down is less than community-wide. And that's because stationary energy, which was our primary driver of those emissions going down, makes up a smaller percentage of emissions for the municipal level, and so you actually see that that rate is not as quite large. And then, you know, some of the other colors here, like the orange colors, such as public transportation and municipal fleet, those have actually stayed pretty static over the years, so that suggests kind of areas where the city has room to further decarbonize. Next slide. All right, so this is looking at grid-supplied electricity and breaking it down by category for what it's used for at the municipal level. So the largest consumption area for grid-supplied electricity is the wastewater treatment plant, the two plants that power the city's operations and provide clean water to everyone. And then the drinking water treatment plant is the next one, it's just under 1/4. So those industrial facilities, when we're talking about municipal operations, those are always going to make up the majority of emissions because they're, you know, very energy-intensive. And then actually, the municipally-owned facilities only takes up 11% of emissions for this category. So powering all the lights and everything else, and City Hall and all the other buildings, it's just 11% here, and then street lighting and traffic signals makes up about 6% according to the data we got from Duke. Next slide. This is a breakdown of the amount of emissions in the transportation sector that is split from Bloomington Transit versus the municipal fleet, which is used for, you know, things like landscaping and all of their municipal operations. And you'll see that the municipal fleet takes up just a bit more than Bloomington Transit, but they're roughly equivalent in the amount of emissions that contribute at the municipal level. Next slide. All right, and last slide here, and bringing us in about 10 minutes, I wanted to really quickly just talk about the city's wastewater treatment plants. So these are, again, not energy-related emissions. These are emissions that are coming from the actual chemical and biochemical processes that are used to treat wastewater, and that results in both methane and nitrous oxide emissions, which go into the atmosphere and, you know, contribute to global warming. And you'll see that it actually, it just makes up 0.2% of community-wide emissions, but when we zoom in on a municipal level, it makes up almost half, or 42.4%. So that suggests this is a really major priority. I mean, one of the ways to reduce emissions here is to invest in technologies like anaerobic digesters. I know this council has looked at that before, and there's a lot of interest there, but this is, you know, I think, an area for really low-hanging fruit for the city to reduce its own emissions and kind of lead by example. All right, that's the conclusion of my presentation, and I would love to open up the floor to any questions the council has and have a discussion about this.
Great, thank you very much for that presentation. Are there questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I wanted to think about the building sector and building sector emissions. My understanding, basically, is there's three big things we need to do. We need to have renewable energy on the grid, we need to invest in energy efficiency, and we need to electrify all buildings, space heating, water heating, et cetera. Of course, we have a lot of local control over two of those things, especially municipal operations, and I appreciate all the work that Sean's been putting into assessing our building stock, but then also development code, of course, with respect to building electrification, energy efficiency. Do you both agree those are pretty critical path priorities for achieving our emissions reduction targets as a city and our climate goals?
I believe they are.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Sean. I'll give you the answer for you.
No problem. I believe they are. Those are the emissions that we have the most control over, and we have the ability to do something about them. And so I've been working with Donovan Energy and KLH Engineers for the past year. We've been looking at energy consumption at our municipal buildings. We've selected a cohort of buildings that are moving on to an ASHRY Level 2 energy audit. You'll be seeing requests that come out of those audits for energy conservation measures in the coming budget cycle. What those are will be determined by that ASHRY Level 2 energy audit.
Thank you.
Stay tuned.
Thank you so much, and thank you both for the presentation and for the glorious tie that you're wearing. It's wonderful, I want one. But I'm really curious, and so we've started this move towards outcome-based budgeting in the city, and you just mentioned sort of thinking about budget cycles particularly as another lever that we, as a council, have control over. I'm really interested in hearing from both of you how you, maybe your thoughts on how you might inform or how you would like us to inform the budget process with our emission reduction targets in mind, and, yeah, other things relative to the budget that might help us as we're starting that process.
Absolutely. The result of the ASHRY Level 2 audits will have the energy conservation measures that are recommended, and it will include the return on investment on those projects. And so whether it's one to three years, four to five years, it'll be stated in those reports, and that will help guide the departments on which conservation measures they want to choose. Yeah.
Questions?
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead, Wes.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, I think you hit the nail on the head there, Sean, and, you know, we're happy on our side to provide whatever data council would need to kind of inform a quantitative analysis of the budget items, but, you know, I think one of the things Sean has done really excellent with her department work is to really balance the different bill benefits, you know, not just look at the emissions side and the financial side, but also think about how it drives other policy outcomes. So I'm really excited to see how council can kind of align its priorities along with all the hard work Sean's doing and find a way to kind of attack multiple priorities at once with each project.
And I wanted to add that you're noticing one of the projects that we're implementing as we speak, we're updating the City Hall LED lights. That's going to achieve an estimated 67% in lighting energy costs annually with the annual reduction of 164.8 tons of CO2 annually. So those numbers are going to be in those audit reports.
Councilmember Rallo?
Thanks for the report. This is really interesting, and I'm glad that progression looks very promising for us. I was thinking of, in terms of our total carbon budget, it's much larger than this, right? Because it includes things like imported materials and imported food and all the embedded energy that comes with that. And, you know, when we think of things like decline in grid supply and electricity, we can approach that through conservation, we can approach it through using photovoltaics locally, producing our own energy. But we don't talk much about sequestration. We don't talk about, you know, planting trees or planting deep-rooted prairie plants or things that are going to absorb carbon. Is that part of the future analysis? Do you think that we could refine the approach so that we get a, you know, clearer idea of the totality and how we can approach those things that often aren't accounted for?
I think that's a really good approach. We are talking with Haskell Smith, our urban forester, to create, to develop a new urban forestry study to know how many trees we have in Bloomington. A lot has changed since the last study in 2018, especially with extreme weather events that we're having because of climate change. Last year, we had 200 trees come down. So we need that study to be updated to know how many trees we have in Bloomington and how much carbon is being sequestered. So I think that's a good conversation to have with Wes on future inventories and how we can start to incorporate that.
Terrific, thank you.
Are there other questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
It's not a question, I just wanted to thank Ms. Mia for all her hard work on this, along with Michaela, who's not, Michaelan, who's not with us anymore in the city, and of course, Nick from ClimateNav. And I did have a back-and-forth with them on a few questions a few weeks ago, so that's why I don't have any tonight.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you. I have a question. So you had the graph up there of stationary emissions, and that seems to be kind of dropping, right? Kind of maybe, I think, I think I heard Wes say that that was a leading cause of kind of the overall drop, and I'm just wondering how much of that is a drop because of, like, municipal stationary emissions changing because of the different things that the city has done versus resident population changing things in terms of, you know, changing lights in their own house, changing how they, you know, their thermostats and things like that? And whether you could speak at all to that concept in terms of our residents that are here and things that they can do that support that drop in stationary emissions?
Yeah, Wes, did you want to comment on, I believe the question is, how much is the reduction in stationary energy consumption due to Duke Energy's renewable energy versus residential energy efficiency improvements?
Basically.
Yes, yeah, happy to comment on that. That's an excellent question. So for sure, you're definitely going to see for stationary energy, the main driver of those emissions going down is going to be the actual change in Duke's, you know, IRPs, their Integrated Resource Plans, and the amount of actual, you know, where this electricity is generated, right? So then decommissioning a coal plant is going to have a huge effect on reducing emissions. That's not to say, though, that the work the municipality is doing itself with the city of Bloomington, as well as what residents are doing, isn't meaningful. That work, we definitely see in the data, is decreasing emissions a lot in those areas, and it significantly really matters. I think that if you look at the municipal emissions inventory, you'll see that stationary energy, that that's primarily going down because of the efforts that the city is doing. And then one thing I would highlight, actually, for any residents listening to this or that are interested in knowing how they can reduce their emissions, Sean has put together on the climate action dashboard that was highlighted in the front, and that's also available and linked on the city's webpage. There's a section for every single sector, not just stationary energy, but actually like any, you know, area of life you can imagine, from how you do your daily commute to how you take out the trash, that highlights different actions residents can take to reduce their personal carbon footprint. And it even has awesome resources on there that Sean has put together regarding, you know, how you can even help reduce the cost of buying your next electric vehicle, or grant programs available to help you almost get, you know, free home energy audits and install HVAC systems and things like that at a significant discount. So there's a lot of stuff out there right now, and all of this will cumulatively add up to really continue to reduce the inventory, so definitely resident involvement is really valued.
And if I could, just plug two of our grant programs that we're really proud of that we have significantly revised. Our Bloomington Green Home Improvement Program, we're providing increased rebates for residents for solar installations, battery energy storage systems to upgrade their electric panel to make those projects feasible, weatherization projects, and EV charging system for their home. Low-income residents have an increased rebate amount, and then also our solar energy efficiency and lighting program for small businesses and nonprofits. We're revising that program where they can receive not only a solar installation, but also nonprofits can receive a battery energy storage system, which provides them with power during a power outage, which allows them to continue to provide essential services.
Great, thank you very much. Those are exciting programs, so I hope that people listening out there will look into that if that's something that you think you identify with. Are there any other last councilmember questions, or? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, just because, because Councilmember Stasberg just mentioned, is there a website or somewhere people can go to get this information?
Yes, if they just Google "sustainable Bloomington," they'll go to our webpage, and it's under Grants and Funding Opportunities.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So on that note, thank you so much for being here tonight. Thank you, Wes, for being online and giving us that presentation, and we appreciate all of your work.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Wes.
All right. As we move on to our legislation tonight, I want to take a moment, it's kind of a privilege of the chair moment, because I know that there's been some community interest, I'll say, in this meeting tonight. So I want to take a minute to introduce it in terms of legislative process because of the confusion and concern over the session shifting from a deliberation session to a legislative session. So I want to clarify my intent for that and hope for how this meeting will proceed this evening for both councilmembers and the public. First, the primary difference between this being a deliberation session and a legislative session is whether or not a vote is allowed on the resolutions considered this evening, regardless of what kind of session, conversation would still have started with this legislation. Okay? A legislative session allows a vote. It does not require a vote. It allows a vote. And a final vote on any piece of legislation can always be postponed to a future meeting if the majority of members need more information or are not ready to make a final decision. And that is true anytime we have a meeting with any piece of legislation. A majority of members can always say
of the chair moment, because I know that there's been some community interest, I'll say, in this meeting tonight. So I want to take a minute to introduce it in terms of legislative process because of the confusion and concern over the session shifting from a deliberation session to a legislative session. So I want to clarify my intent for that and hope for how this meeting will proceed this evening for both councilmembers and the public. First, the primary difference between this being a deliberation session and a legislative session is whether or not a vote is allowed on the resolutions considered this evening, regardless of what kind of session, conversation would still have started with this legislation. Okay? A legislative session allows a vote. It does not require a vote. It allows a vote. And a final vote on any piece of legislation can always be postponed to a future meeting if the majority of members need more information or are not ready to make a final decision. And that is true anytime we have a meeting with any piece of legislation. A majority of members can always say, we are not ready to make a decision about this. We would like to postpone this until the next meeting. And I just want to clarify that for councilmembers and the public, that that is always possible, and that is certainly possible tonight. One of the reasons why, the primary reason why I wanted to potentially allow a vote tonight is that there are several changes to the UDO already in process, either staff-directed changes or from prior resolutions passed by this body. And because of that, it is helpful to the workflow of the Planning Department and Plan Commission to have a more complete picture of what council is working through sooner rather than later. And due to that, I wanted to make sure council had the option to vote on these changes tonight. Though, once again, there is nothing stopping people from postponing a final vote until our next meeting if that is what the majority should choose to do. Similarly, in terms of legislative process, legislation can always be amended or changed. So somebody can propose an amendment to this legislation tonight. Somebody could say, I'm considering an amendment, so I would like to postpone final vote until I can consider this amendment further. That is always an option. And if that is the case, any member can, can do that. For the sake of time management and our staff, because I do not believe that there are any final amendments that have been submitted at this point, I would prefer to postpone final consideration if members are interested in amending, amending the legislation, because otherwise it's very difficult sometimes to kind of amend on the fly. Second, I want to go over the process by which changes to the UDO can be made and make sure to clarify for the public where we are right now in that process. So there are two routes for changing the Unified Development Ordinance, the UDO. The first is what I already referenced in my personal councilmember report, is changes to the UDO can come from city staff. City staff will propose those changes to the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission will review those changes, forward them to council with a positive, a negative, or a neutral recommendation. And at that point, an ordinance will be brought before council detailing those changes and the recommendation, and council will make the official last move of voting on the change ordinance. And at that ordinance stage, amendments can still be made, right? The council can still say, oh, whatever came from the Plan Commission, we would like to change that, we would like to have an amendment. Nothing is final until that final vote by council. The second process, so that's the first way. The first way for a UDO change is to come from city staff. The second way is what we're starting tonight. Council considers a resolution requesting that Plan Commission make the change. And this is the tool that city councils have to instigate any kind of change to the UDO. Okay? It's just saying, hey, we would like you to do this. So if such a resolution, as it did in November, actually, receives a majority vote, then city staff make the changes or facilitate Plan Commissioners in making changes that align with the request. The petition will go before Plan Commission detailing those changes. Plan Commission will then forward them back to council with a positive, negative, or neutral recommendation. An ordinance will be brought before council detailing the changes and the Commissioner's recommendation. Once again, you can have amendments at this stage, and it is at this point that a final vote will actually result in changes being made to the UDO. Okay? No matter what vote happens tonight, if there's even a vote that happens, there will not actually be any changes in the UDO as a result of tonight's meeting. And that full process of council requesting, you know, having this resolution to request a change to be made involves at least a minimum of four meetings that include public comment. So that's the meeting tonight about the resolution. That's two Plan Commission meetings at minimum, and then a second reading back at council at the ordinance level. And once again, you can always postpone things. So you have a second reading, you're not ready to vote, you go to a third meeting, third reading, and that's another meeting. Okay? So there is, this is the first step in the process. Okay? This is the first step in the council process. And once again, I'm going to say, regardless of any vote that may be taken tonight, and once again, I emphasize "may," the UDO is not going to change. Okay? Tomorrow morning, the UDO is going to be the exact same as, as it is right now. Okay? Because we are at the very beginning of a process. And I just really wanted to make that clear because I know that people have really strong feelings about some of these proposed changes. This is more people than have been in this room for like a month. Okay? And I, I just want to make sure that everybody realizes that this is the first stage in this process. It is not the final stage, it is not the final vote. Nothing that happens tonight is a final anything, and there's always plenty, like, there is still plenty of space for conversation, plenty of time for conversation and input. So with that, I guess the other thing that I wanted to make sure of is that because we changed it from a deliberation session, there was interest on my behalf, and I think other people's behalf as well, in considering how different rules could be made tonight in terms of presentation, debate, and discussion. So do we have a motion to that effect right now? No, that, that came now. We'll get there if maybe, I think that our attorneys are going to put what was drafted up on the screen to make sure that everybody can see it and hear it.
I move to suspend the rules pertaining to the rules of debate and structure presentation and debate for each item of legislation tonight as follows. Fifteen minutes of presentation of the legislation, five minutes of response from the Planning and Transportation Department, five minutes of response from the Office of the Mayor, five minutes of response from the sponsor, 45 minutes of questions from councilmembers, 60 minutes of public comment, 30 minutes of councilmember comment. During the periods of councilmember questions and comments, there will be no limit on the number of speeches or questions by councilmembers before other councilmembers get a chance to speak, but the chair is still responsible for, for facilitating discussion to maintain decorum.
And as a clarification, a suspension of rules requires a two-thirds majority to pass and is not debatable, but it was clarified to me earlier by the deputy attorney that there can be clarification questions to make sure that there is understanding about the motion on the table. So are there clarification questions from any councilmembers about this procedure tonight or the reasons why? Councilmember Rallo.
Fifteen minutes of presentation of the legislation, will that be simply by the sponsors or other invited parties?
That's sponsor choice.
Sponsor's choice?
Yeah. As with any other legislation, sometimes the sponsor does it in completion, and sometimes there's a collaboration.
Okay.
Are there other clarification questions? Councilmember Rallo, or Councilmember Ruff, I'm sorry.
I was making a comment, though, and I didn't have a question, but we're going to have an opportunity to comment?
No, it's not debatable, so there's only clarification questions.
So I'd like to ask the sponsors for clarification then on the presentation.
Well, you, that, this is not the time for that. This is a time for this particular motion to suspend the rules.
So, wait a minute. So if I have a question about the structure, that's not a question to be asked now?
No, the details of how the presentations will be structured is not part of this motion. It's just the time constraint on the presentation that's a part of the motion.
But you responded to Councilmember Rallo when he asked about that, and you said it's the choice of, of sponsors. I was just kind of following up on that.
Well, you can ask a question, I guess, and we'll see if it seems germane. I'm not sure that it's germane.
Well, I don't need to ask it then, it's fine. Forget it.
Okay. All right. I think that I would like the clerk to call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
No.
Rallo?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
No.
So given that it needs a two-thirds majority to pass, that means that this failed with a vote to five to three, so that means that instead of having those rules, we default to normal council procedure rules, which does not have any time limits on presentation, does not have any time limits on any kind of question or answer, basically has no time limits on anything. So, Councilmember Daley?
I move Resolution 202505 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce by title and synopsis. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. I guess we better call the roll on the motion to introduce. Will the clerk please do that?
No.
Councilmember Rallo?
No.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Stossberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Daley?
No.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Councilmember Asari?
No.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Well, that is a tie, so that motion fails. Next.
I move Resolution 202506 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
It's been moved and seconded to read Resolution 202506 by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll on that motion?
Councilmember Rallo?
No.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Stossberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Daley?
No.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Councilmember Asari?
No.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruff?
No.
Seeing as that is once again tied for four, that also fails. So we will not hear that legislation tonight, which means there will be no comment on that legislation either. We have now moved on to item number five on our agenda, which is public comment on items not on the agenda. Is there any member of the public who would like to make a comment on an item that is not on the agenda this evening? Nope. Go ahead, you'll have three minutes, please. Introduce yourself, and then you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Madam President. This is Christopher Emery from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I just want to share just a couple things with you today that my, first of all, my Duke Energy report is always very positive, and I should share that more often because I think energy efficiency starts at our own home. We had our advocacy council meeting today, which is one of my favorite things that I get to do monthly, and some of you have been visited today. And one of our items was an update on the Convention Center. And going to Councilmember Piedmont Smith's constituent meeting, what we were excited about was not the physical building of the Convention Center, but it was that revitalization of the south side of town, that First Street area, south of the square, which really needs some uplift. And I, we think that anchor there at the Convention Center is going to revitalize that. We have the Walnut College Corridor in the works as well. So this is, I think this is a great opportunity, and we're excited to see what that's going to look like in, say, five years. We've seen some other, we heard some other comments at that same advocacy council meeting from other members that had shown that these sort of projects do have that sort of revitalization vehicle for the rest of the area. And so we, we can't wait to see that. Yesterday was Chamber Day at the State House, so I was at the State House. And we are in a time with a lot of fiscal restraint and a lot of uncertainty. And it was good to see that the Fiscal Committee of the Council met on Tuesday. I have not seen the proceedings, but look forward to watching them. And the Budget Task Force meets Friday, but I think it's important to look at these issues, especially now we're in this time where we don't know fiscally where we're going to be as far as what's going to come in revenue. We have the Senate Bill 1 about property taxes. So this is, this is a time to sort of tighten our belts a little bit and look at some of these things. And one other sort of housekeeping note, that this might have been a good idea to do the committee as a whole tonight, as far as if you're looking, if you're looking at sort of council processes from my perspective, and I sort of felt that at the time. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public who would like to make a comment on an item not on the agenda? Thank you. Please state your name, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Counsel, Chris Sterbaum. I didn't plan to talk about this tonight, but we have a little open mic time, so I thought I'd just reflect on Cascades Park. You know, the night that council decided not to protect Cascades Park with historic designation, I know you guys were under the gun. It was, it was the discussion of the problems in the Middle East. You were being called names. You weren't really ready to think carefully, I think, about Bloomington's first park. You know, you didn't hear that that road was the, was the road to Indianapolis, the very first road when Indianapolis became the state capital, that road that wound through Cascades that had been certainly an Indian Trail. People had been walking across that Ford, that Ford since before Bloomington was even Bloomington. And early, early in the IU campus, the university people would come, the city would come out to the Cascades Park because it was like an air conditioner, you know, in the 1890s, 1910. You could get on your horse, or you could take a hike, walk to the falls. It was 10 degrees cooler in there. It was also the first preservation action in the city of Bloomington. The Parks Board was formed to buy that park. The limestone industry wanted that. You know, it's good limestone under that creek. And you can see the quarry right next to the park. The plan was to go ahead, take out the rest of the park, turn it into limestone. But this was also the time the state was doing state parks. Their first progressive movement was doing national parks across the country. And Bloomington formed their own Parks Board and bought this park because they knew these were precious, precious waterfalls. And there are, there are five of them. I've walked to all of them now. You don't really see them all, but some are backed up against the golf course. My grandson and I have cleaned out the golf balls from two of those falls. We brought home a huge catch of them. My brother is playing with some of those. But it's a beautiful resource. And the creek that goes on behind the ball fields is also just a gorgeous creek. It's a, it's a resource that could be so developed and so appreciated. And I think it just got short shrift, you know? Am I running out of time?
Your time is up.
Was that what that means? Okay. Well, I appreciate your time. And since we were all gathered, I thought, my favorite part.
Thank, thank you for your comments. Is there anybody on Zoom who has their hand raised to make a comment on an item not on the agenda?
No, hands raised.
Okay. Is there anybody else in chambers who would like to make a comment on an item not on the agenda? Okay, thank you very much.
Actually, there is a hand raised now.
Oh, now there's a hand raised? All right. Let's go ahead and move to Zoom then. Please state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, Cynthia Bretheim from Prospect Hill. I'm just, wanted to make a comment that I was in the Fountain Square Mall the other day, and a college, a couple of college students and their parents were wandering around looking for a restroom. And often the restrooms there are unlocked, but they were locked because it was late. And it'd be really great if we had a downtown visitor center. It might have to be staffed, but visitors downtown don't have any place to use a restroom. Do you really want them to use the library? Some people don't know where the library is if they're new to town or just visiting. Or should they use a restaurant? Or should they go to Fountain Square Mall? Because it's one of the few places downtown that has a public restroom that's open, which is very kind of them, very generous of them. It would just make downtown Bloomington more welcoming to visitors, since most of us would like... would like that to happen. They were really thankful that I showed them where to go and was glad to open a restroom for them, because it was medium late, early, early evening. But I just wanted to make a suggestion for that, as long as we really care about our visitors. Thank you very much.
Has anybody in chambers changed their mind and decided that they want to make a public comment, too? Is there anybody else online who would like to make a comment? Thank you. We'll revert back to council then. I do have a note on council's schedule. We had a Fiscal Committee meeting this week, and we discussed, last year, if council members remember, we had like a budget advance meeting where we discussed our priorities, our budget priorities. And so we discussed scheduling for that this year as being the deliberation session on the ninth of April. And the Fiscal Committee will, there will also, so that meeting will include a discussion by council and also like an interactive kind of activity that does include members of the public in it in terms of thinking about those budget priorities. And then the Fiscal Committee will kind of compile those responses. Last year, there was some conversation of wanting to make, make that list more of a priority list, to be able to communicate better or differently to the administration about what our priorities are. So the Fiscal Committee will compile all of that information, make a priority list, and then council will need to approve that priority list that they've compiled. So to that end, we want, the Fiscal Committee would like to schedule an additional council meeting in April. So there are five Wednesdays in April. There are three meetings scheduled. So we would like to schedule a meeting on either April 23rd or April 30th at the usual council time of 6:30. So if we could all consult our calendars right now for me, and let me know if there is, if you have a particular preference or limitation between April 23rd and 30th. Clerk Bolden?
Not on the 23rd.
I'm sorry, what?
We're not available on the 23rd.
Okay, so the clerk would request the 30th. Are there, Councilmember Daley?
Conference on the 23rd.
So you also need the 30th. Is anybody not available on the 30th? Okay, great, then we will have that.
We just need a quorum in person?
Yeah. Okay, that's fine. All right, so April 30th looks like the day. So if you could mark your calendars with that right now, and we'll make sure to get official notice out about that as applicable. Is there anything else that anybody would like to say for the good of the order? I really appreciate the public coming out tonight, and I'm sorry that there was not a discussion around what I suspect is why you came out. So, thank you for your time. Meeting adjourned.